All council members are present with the exception of Councilwoman Cheryl Pogue. Everyone has already signed in on their computers, so the next item up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I don't see any youngsters in the audience, so let's just all stand up and honor our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, give yourself a round of applause because you all are awesome. All right, special presentations. Do we have any special presentations for tonight, Michelle?
None.
All right, then let's go ahead and move on to Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. And since I do not see anybody from the Parker Chamber of Commerce in the building, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item, which is general public comment for anyone here wishing to address council on items not on our agenda. This is the time. There is a three-minute time limit. You guys know the rules and...
Go.
You're set to go.
Hello, Mayor and Town Council. We do have an item on the consent agenda tonight. The resolution to appoint regular members to renewal terms and to fill two vacancies of the Parker Cultural and Scientific Commission and to appoint the chair. And we have one of our new members here tonight, and our chair, Diane Roth, couldn't make it, I think because of the weather. So I just want to say thank you so much for hopefully approving this consent agenda item. And I want to introduce you to someone I'm sure you don't know. Our new Commissioner, Todd Hendricks. The other two were not able to make it because of the weather. But Todd, do you have any comments to make?
I just can't seem to not stop volunteering for the towns, but I'm excited for this.
Weather can't keep you away. All right, Todd, cool. Thank you very much. So I will say after Newsies' performance this weekend, someone came up to me and said, "I didn't know Todd Hendricks was in Newsies," because we have Ryan Huckabee who plays Snyder, and they thought that was Todd Hendricks. So you got kudos for a good performance, even though you weren't even there. All right. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:08 PM and move to reports, items, and comments from Mayor and Council. Mr. Dyack.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items. One, E470, we had a meeting on the 24th. We authorized Phase II design work for the Phase II expansion. What that is, is once the Phase I expansion from I-25 until, I think it was Quincy, ended, they're going to go Phase II up until I-70, so they're going to start work on that. We approved bond refinancing so we can get to level debt. That's a good thing. That was a 2004 initiative that the board put out there, so we're finally achieving that. I'd like to congratulate Douglas County Commissioner Roger Partridge. He was nominated and affirmed as part of the executive committee for E470, so kudos to him, and that is all.
Thank you very much. Debbie Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 16th of this month, we had the partnership of Douglas County Governments, and a couple of things that came out of that from other jurisdictions. One that's pretty noteworthy, Douglas County is trying to put forth, and they've got sponsors to maybe go to the House and Senate to establish a District 23 that where we will separate from Arapahoe County, which we're now in the 18th Judicial District, so that would be Elbert County, Lincoln County, Douglas County, and that's it, because we'd be separate from Arapahoe. And the reasoning behind this, for one in particular, is from 2014 to 2018, Arapahoe County had, for instance, 120 homicides. In Douglas County, we had four. So we pay in from our area here about 33% to those costs, and we get back less than 20%. So they feel that it would be more cost-effective and better for the citizens and better representation if we could get a new judicial district, would be District 23, established for those three counties. Also Highlands Ranch Metro District, they did combine with South Metro. We had a really, Council Pines and Council Member Rivera volunteered to go and speak on their behalf. They are looking at moving from a statutory to a home rule charter, so that would be really good. And the presentation was from the Youth Congress, and it was on sources of strength. We had an excellent presentation with hope, health, and strength, so that it was really one of the largest attended January meetings. Usually they're kind of sparse, but it was a great meeting. Also had a meeting with Douglas County Housing Partnership. Last year turned out really well in our shared equity loan program. There were eight loans issued. There were four payoffs that occurred. In the amortized loans, there were no new loans given, but there were 12 payoffs. So that's really important and has not happened in a while to that significant of payoffs. Also, just for note, there were 37 families that are currently looking to participate in what Douglas County Housing Partnership has to offer, and they're down payment assistance, and the dollars are there to use. However, there are no properties in the amount that any of these 37 families can qualify. They're all above what they're looking at. Council Member Williams and I had a meeting with P3 that gave us some updated information. Also attended Howie Mandel concert, I guess, performance was a better word, at the Pace Center last Tuesday night. And Parker Arts helped sponsor a house concert yesterday at the Gibsons that was most excellent. And I think that's all.
All right, excellent. Renee.
So in addition to what Debbie said, every member of Town Council is currently participating in land development ordinance modernization project interviews, and this is a project that will take place for the next three years with lots of citizen input in the town of Parker. And the goal is to work on the administration and procedures related to land use applications, zoning districts, and land uses allowed, and the development of quality standards. So it'll be a long process with lots of public input, and when the citizens see announcements to participate in the different meetings and surveys and stuff, we hope we have good attendance. That's it.
Okay. Jeff.
So I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting last Tuesday as my first role as a liaison, so they kicked me out after 15 minutes. That's why Dennis isn't here. It was good, and I just want to say too, and I emailed with Tom, but to the Public Works team, thank you guys so much for all the street work you've been doing. I know your guys have been out at early hours, late hours, and stuff away from their families, but it's really appreciated. It seems like we've got hit quite a bit lately, so really appreciate it. That's it for me.
Cool. Josh.
Just a couple things. Debbie touched on it. Partnership was great. It was Douglas County Youth Initiative presenting Sources of Strength, and it was outstanding. I have relinquished the chair of Douglas County Youth Initiative to Jay Carpenter from Loan Tree, and I couldn't have gone out, I think, more proud with them presenting to the partnership. Douglas County Youth Initiative is a byproduct, if you will, of the Douglas County Partnership of Government, and very successful, and I'm very, very proud where Sources of Strength has gone. And ask your kids, if they don't have it in their school, why not? And if they want to learn more about it, feel free to email me or reach out to their principal. It's a great, 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 great program. We know, just documented, that seven young lives have been saved with Sources of Strength. So with that, I also had the opportunity to again represent the town for the selection of library trustee candidates to present to the county commissioners. This year, we presented three candidates from each district, and then the commissioners will select one of those candidates to sit on the library trustees. And just again, we are blessed to live in Douglas County, just an incredible group of individuals, and it is always, as we know here in town, it is always hard to select one out of these pools. But again, I thank all of the candidates that showed up, and I will say for the record, District 1 was better represented than the other districts.
No. So just to add to everyone's comments about Sources of Strength, my oldest son participated in that when he was younger, and I will say that from the tools that he learned from that at school, and to be quite honest, he signed up and joined it, the group, because there were cute girls in it. That was his reasoning, but from the tools that he learned from that, he was able to spot someone at our church youth group who was planning suicide and was able to get her the help, get her the help that she needed. So if, yeah, anyone watching at home, if you're a kid, if you have kids, ask them if they participate in it, and if they don't, they should. It's a really good program.
I believe that they told us that day, five of our seven high schools have that program, and 11 of the middle schools?
Yeah, we started with the high schools. We pushed it to the high schools. There's been a few that haven't come on board yet, but Chaparral is actually a national model. Very, very proud of Chaparral. Still looking to get a couple others in the local area to come on board, but then we started pushing it downstream, or upstream actually, if you will, to the middle schools, and the middle schools have come at it ferociously, and they're really getting on board. It's a peer-to-peer program. Sometimes when the child is in danger, they're not looking to look to the adult, but the kids can identify the problem, then the kid that can identify the problem then goes to the trusted adult. It takes away that challenge for the affected child to look out for an adult. They are more likely to discuss something with another child, and then that child can reach out to the trusted adult, and it just gives another way to intervene, if you will.
Absolutely. So for me, the only two things I've got, we had the town of Parker hosted the Metro Mayor's Caucus Annual Retreat here at the Pace Center a couple weeks ago, and it was a very, very well-attended event, and tons of kudos to staff. It happened to snow like crazy that day, and we had Kelly Bruff from the Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce, a lot of people don't know, she was the first female snowplow driver for the city and county of Denver, and so for her to walk in and go, "You know what? Your staff did a really good job of plowing the roads and getting everything clear." That was pretty nice. But everyone was very, very impressed with our facility, and in fact, a few municipalities, Westminster included, asked me if they could send their people down to talk to our people at Pace, because they're considering building a cultural center as well, and they were so impressed with what we had that they want to model it after that, so that was good news. So that, and then last but not least, if you haven't bought your tickets to Newsies, buy it and come see the only bearded Roosevelt you will ever see in your life. It was a fantastic performance. I was stopped by two different people this weekend and asked where the touring company that put on Newsies is going to next after this run, and they were both completely shocked that this was actually a local production of local talent. They thought the caliber was so high that it had to be a national touring company, so that's very, very good to hear. So, all right, with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item, which is our Town Administrator's Report. Those watching at home, go online to parkeronline.org, and you can read all about it, and Michelle's got a copy there. We've got copies as well. It's a great place for statistics and information about what's going on in the town of Parker each quarter, so that's out there right now. Michelle, do you have anything else you'd like to add to that? All right, cool. Now let's go ahead and move on to the next item. This is item number eight. Oh, wait, no, I skipped a whole thing, our consent agenda. So let's go ahead and do that. Item number six, which is our consent agenda.
Seven.
Seven. Oh, really? Mine has six.
Our screen says seven.
Well, I'm going off a paper, so I'm just lame. All right, seven, the consent agenda, and I'll write it on mine here, seven. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote unless a council member asks to have something removed for further discussion. So with that, council, I would entertain discussion or a motion on consent agenda items 7A through 7F.
So moved.
We have a motion by Josh and a second by Renee. In just a second, and I'm going to be stretching here, a little box will appear on all of your computer screens. Those boxes, when they appear, will ask you to vote on the consent agenda.
We got it.
Hit the appropriate button, and then click Save. And just for clarification for our clerk and everybody, I had a box pop up on mine even though I can't... Oh, and it just disappeared. Good, good. Results are up there. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, which was the Town Administrator's Report, we've already done, so let's go ahead and move on to item number nine, which is ordinances. Item 9A is ordinance number 1.526 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance conveying certain real property by easement to the Parker Water and Sanitation District for the installation of water and sewer pipeline on a portion of Lot 1B, Main Street Center, First Amendment. And Alex, wearing the engineering blue shirt and the wishful thinking pink spring tie, is up for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Good evening. Before you, if your consideration tonight is an ordinance that proposes to dedicate an easement to the Parker Water and Sanitation District over a town-owned parcel, which is Lot 1B, Main Street Center, First Amendment. This property is located in the downtown area, on the south side of Main Street and directly west of the Parker Schoolhouse facility. The property is currently owned by the town of Parker and is undeveloped. Adjacent to the property to the south is a town-owned public parking lot that is planned to be reconstructed later this year as a capital improvement project. During a previously submitted development application for Lot 1B, the Parker Water and Sanitation District and the town's fire life safety reviewers set forth a requirement that a new fire hydrant would be required to be installed on Lot 1B with any new development in the future. This hydrant will be served from a water main located within the parking lot, as shown on this slide. Because this development application ultimately did not move forward and the hydrant was not installed, the town is proposing to install this hydrant along with the domestic water service stub to Lot 1B along with the parking lot reconstruction project. This is intended to eliminate the need for any future development on Lot 1B to cut the new parking lot pavement in order to connect these services in the future. Any future developer of Lot 1B will be required to reimburse the town for the cost of this work. In order to install the hydrant on Lot 1B, a small easement must be dedicated to the Parker Water and Sanitation District on that property. The district requires that easements be dedicated over all fire hydrants in order to preserve their ability to access and maintain those facilities. The proposed easement is 15 feet by 25 feet and is non-exclusive in nature to allow other improvements to be located within the easement area. Staff does recommend approval of this ordinance granting this easement to Parker Water and San. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions for Alex?
I do. I mean, the TAP fees were eating that cost, but that will be, we're not eating the cost of the TAP fees.
So Parker Water has agreed, because the TAP will not serve any current development, it's an open field, not to require the TAP fees at this time. The charge goes at the time of development of Lot 1B.
Outstanding.
Other questions? No? All right, since this is public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:23 PM if there's anyone here to address council on this item. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:23, and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.526 on second reading.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Josh. That's Josh Rivero, and a second by Debbie, Ms. Debbie Lewis. Council, in just a few moments, the magic box will open on your screen. There it is. Slowing down for technology. And look at that, people. It passes 5-0 unanimously. Fantastic. Next item up on our agenda is item 9B. This is ordinance number 9.284 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Aurora and the town of Parker regarding the design, construction, ownership, and maintenance of Kings Point Way. Mr. Hudson, wearing your engineering white and nice periwinkle tie.
Engineering blue tie.
Engineering blue tie.
Yeah, it's blue.
My wife would just be impressed that I said periwinkle instead of blue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight in front of you, you have an item that is an IGA with the City of Aurora for Kings Point Way. As many are aware, we've been working with the City of Aurora for almost over 12 years now regarding this road that was formerly known as Eastern Access Drive before it became Kings Point Way. This is a vicinity map showing the area in question, and on the left side of the screen is Parker Road with E470 on the right side, or the east, that would be to the east of Kings Point Way, and Kings Point Way is going to be a three-lane collector road to connect proposed Aurora Parkway in the City of Aurora with Cottonwood Drive. Most people do not realize that literally 800 feet north of the entrance by Boondocks is the City of Aurora. So that's the reason for this IGA tonight. Little bit of background, in 2017, the town committed to build the entirety of Kings Point Way, and this is per an annexation agreement with Douglas County Associates. The town has received approximately $900,000 in funding for the roadway from the Vantage Point Development. With approximately two-thirds of the roadway, it's overall, it's about a half-mile of road that'll be constructed, this IGA is needed to, the authority of who can construct the roadway and determine and delegate maintenance responsibilities as they come up in the future. And this IGA, to my knowledge, is the first IGA between the town and the City of Aurora regarding capital improvements, and it took a lot of negotiations to get to this point. We have very good working relationship with Douglas County. We have no relationship with Aurora till this conversation started. Little bit of the IGA details, per the agreement that we had with the background in 2017, we committed to build the entirety of Kings Point Way. This IGA also spells that out as well. The roadway will be built to town requirements for a collector, a three-lane collector section, but ultimately Aurora will review and approve that section of roadway within our limits of construction. We've submitted those plans, 90% submitted to the City of Aurora, and we have some minor comments left. We're very close to getting this approved. Following final acceptance, after following construction, the town will convey the roadway right-of-way and easements to the City of Aurora for that section that's in within Aurora. The developer out there, the landowner, has agreed to dedicate the easements and the right-of-way to the town to allow us to construct, and ultimately, these will be conveyed. What's in Aurora will become Aurora's, and what's in the town will stay the town's. Aurora will assume the long-term maintenance, and the last thing is, this will be a separate MOU that will be coming at a later date with you, but we've agreed to snowplow and sweep the road for a five-year period up to Aurora Parkway. The biggest reason for that is there's nowhere for our trucks to turn around. I've thought about skidding them sideways and turning around like...
A little Dukes of Hazzard there? That'd be great.
Fast and Furious, Tokyo Drift, but it doesn't work with a snowplow, so...
Well, it could, maybe.
I saw different today on Hilltop, but I don't want to get you in trouble.
So an ordinance is needed to approve this IGA, and Aurora is scheduling their approval process to begin in February, so we're ahead of them. They have a much lengthier process to approve IGAs than we do. But with that, I'll answer any questions you might have on this IGA.
Council, any questions for Chris?
No, I just, I think obviously eventually when Aurora Parkway does touch, another connector is of the utmost importance to alleviate pressure on Parker Road. Not only that, you know, the wonderful thing about this is it's easy access for those Repose County folks to come down, drop their dollars at our local establishments, and then head on home, and we love that a lot. So kudos to this, kudos to the negotiations, and I know it's been 12 hot years, and I'm glad it's finally come into fruition. So well done to both our staff, obviously, and to Aurora's staff for opening the door finally.
Anything else?
I'd just say that you and, you know, your cohorts, maybe we need to send you all to the Middle East, since you got this IGA with Aurora.
Just Washington. Yeah, exactly. Seem to go that far.
There's no hold there.
All right, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:29 PM if there's anyone here to address council on this item. And seeing none, we will close public comment at 7:29 PM. And hey, council, guess what? I'm going to entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
Just one comment before we...
Yes.
So Chris, if you, I don't know if you can now, pull back up the map.
Yeah, hang on a second.
Just acknowledge your team and all the hard efforts. Is the item that was down there in the blue that was annexed into as commercial was going to be multifamily, was zoned originally for multifamily. So you took it out of that as part of your negotiations, brought it in as commercial, and then did this whole other deal with Aurora. So my kudos to you, a lot of hard work in doing that.
I was not par, a lot of the big part of the heavy lifting when it came to that annexation agreement, that was community development and Tom Williams and some of our engineering staff, so...
Don't give Tom too much credit. He's back, sitting back there smiling a little bit.
I don't see John then, so thank you guys. That's huge, and that just shows you're listening. I appreciate it.
So I'd entertain a motion, please. More discussion? John?
No, I'm just to kind of further Councilmember Toborg's comment. I think there are a lot of these things that the council member has referenced that the community just doesn't see. You know, to me, everybody here, even previous members, truly listen. It's just, are we in a position to do anything? And a lot of the things, I think, when we hear, we head things off before they get to a public meeting. So to kind of further Councilmember Toborg's comments, I think there are more than a few more of these that we have that we just don't see the light of day, that staff and council has heard the citizens, but they just don't know that these things have existed.
Okay. All right.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.284 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Josh and a second by Renee. In just a few moments, council, you're going to see that pretty little box pop up on your screen, and you're going to have the desire to click a choice, and this would be the time to do so. After you click all those choices, right up, stretch, there it is! Yay! Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before council, I will adjourn at 7:31 PM. Have a good evening, everybody. everybody.